Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council Regular Meeting to order. Cheryl, would you do the roll call, please?
Council members Hannah Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Potem Hockman, Mayor Newton.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We will now recess to closed session. Good evening again. I'd like to reconvene the public session. Will the City Attorney report on actions taken in closed session?
Yes, the City Council discussed those matters listed on the agenda and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you, John. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Bash and then if you would remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Dick Hillary. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. When I first moved here in 2008, I moved to a city called Corona. I was very quickly corrected and said it's not Corona, it's Norco. Now I find out I live in Eastvale. I'd like to find out where I live. Except that I would like to say that I am ecstatically happy to live where I do because I have found that this neighborhood, this town, is patriotic and spiritual to the point where I really love it. And I have to tell you, it's not so in too many of these places. And so I'm honored to be able to be a part of this organization. I'm very much honored. And I want to thank Michelle for inviting me and for you allowing me. Blessed is the man who walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful, but his delight is in the law of the Lord. And his law doth he meditate day and night. And he shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water, that bringeth forth its fruit in his season, and his leaf shall not wither nor fother; and whatsoever he doeth, shall prosper. I choose to believe that the magnificent spirit of this church, of this town, has to do with what is at the apparent heart of its leadership. And so, Father, I ask that you very strongly bless and empower every leader in this town, that the example that it sets for all other states and nations will somehow ring so true that once again we don't have to say, "I live where there doesn't seem to be any spirituality." I love this town. Father, I ask you to bless it in every conceivable way and may everyone in this council, may everyone in this city walk in the paths of righteousness in a magnificent honor. And I thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen and amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you for your service. Okay, we're going to have a presentation by Jim Burdette and the California High School Rodeo Association. Gentlemen, ladies.
Hi, I'm Jim Burdette, President of District Eight California High School Rodeo Association. I want to give you guys a quick Reader's Digest version on what we are. High school rodeos for kids in 6th grade through 12th. Grade 6, 7th, and 8th is our junior high division. 9th through 12th is our high school division. High school rodeo is a national nonprofit organization in 47 states, the Provinences of Canada, and Australia. We are District Eight. We have members from Humhule, which is down by San Diego, all the way up to Lancaster. California has nine districts that send their top five kids in each event to state finals, which is in Bishop, California, to compete for the top four spots in the state to go to nationals. This year, our national finals is in Rock Springs, Wyoming. Our junior highs already had their state finals in Red Bluff, California. In District Eight was honored, we sent six kids to the nationals for the junior high division, and Lebanon, Tennessee. They're all leaving Monday and it's the following week, so they've got a big journey ahead of them. Besides rodeo, our members must be enrolled in school, maintain good grades, and have good behavior. If we get bad letters from councils or anything, they're out. No fighting. We've got the best kids in the world. If you come to one of our rodeos, you'll never hear so many "yes, sirs," "yes, ma'am," "no, ma'am," "Mr. Burdette." We've got great kids. They have to turn in report cards quarterly to show they're making grades to be eligible to rodeo. In closing, Patty Ireland has been a pleasure to work with. Ingalls Park is a great facility, and it's only possible with friends and families and members donating. Any help the city could do with us for our rodeos up there would be fantastic. We were going to be there this year, I believe this season. Our season runs September through June. We'll be up there three times this year, so we're really excited about that. It's a great facility. So at this time, I want to introduce, I've got our student board here and we have a couple members in high school rodeo. We have a board and we let the kids run it. We have secretary, vice president, president. We have kids actually in charge. Event directors, trying to teach them responsibility. They have a budget. Obviously, it's overseen by parents, but we let them work this stuff out, teach them responsibility and everything. It's a great organization.
Hi, I'm Gracie Buss Sutton, and I have been in California High School Rodeo Association for one year.
Hi, I'm Cory Burdette, and I've been in the high school rodeo for four years now.
Any relation?
Yeah, that's my daughter.
Hi, my name is Dakota Boyce, and I've been in this association for three years now, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, my name is Bennett McComas. I'm District Eight's Vice President, and I have been in lovely District Eight for four years now.
Hi, my name's Wyatt Sutton, and I've been in District Eight for four years now, and I am the student board president. And I wanted to come and thank you guys for keeping that facility nice. Everybody loves it, and we wanted to give you guys some plaques to show our appreciation.
I was, but, you know, I'd like you to come down there with me. Well, you're already here, buddy. Okay. Don't hesitate.
You know, one of the good things, and I've been involved with rodeo for a long time, is these kids, when we put stalls and corrals up there, they at least clean them and appreciate that. And I really, you guys take good care of everything up there for us, too. So when we say, you know, "We want you there more," I'm totally for that because that's what it's all about. You're a future of our rodeo industry, so thank you guys very much. Appreciate you keeping it clean up there. It's really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you again. Thank you. Okay, moving on to City Council business. City Council Communications reports on regional boards and commissions. Kevin?
I have several things. First off, WRCOG, it turns out that the contract cities issue, which I'm sure Andy knows more than I do, but the contract cities in which they were trying to force cities to do away with contract labor and hire, cities have been exempt. It did pass. Counties are not exempt. I don't quite know what that, the ramifications, but essentially what it means is we can continue pretty much as we are, but I'm kind of hoping Andy's going to be able to do a report on that sometime in the near future. What is still up in the air, and I think that we should take a position on it even stronger than we have, is the idea that the state of California would control cell sites and put them wherever they want. So for example, when we voted down a cell site that an entire neighborhood was against, we would not be able to do that. Anybody can apply, and we would have no control, no jurisdiction, and we'd make no money on it. Medical marijuana, I don't under, I'm confused by it because federal government says it's illegal, but the state of California is just moving headlong to find ways to allow it. It's something that I think we need to keep an eye on. I'm sure Eric, I assume. Tumpf, Tumpf is also something, we had a very good meeting today where we were essentially told, and Andy can jump in on this, it appears that the bridge has been funded via the latest legislation, and they are now programming the money toward the widening of Hamner. But there are some steps we have to take, and what I'm kind of going to ask Andy to do is that we really move on that, and I'm sure we will. Andy was at the meeting today. The HERO program is something else they would like to do. A presentation, not on the HERO program, I'm sorry, one of the stats that was interesting about the HERO program that I thought you guys might be interested in. And for those that don't know, the HERO program is essentially making your home more energy-efficient in a way that doesn't cost you a whole lot of money depending on what your, depending on what your, oh shoot, I can't find it. Depending on what your income is. And it had some pretty good stats, so I'm going to sort of say them off the top of my head, which I probably shouldn't do, but just in case. There's been, what was it, Andy, I guess 400-some? Oh, you have it. Good. I think it's very interesting, the stat. Oh, Norco, here it is. 397 homes have been approved. There's been jobs created 89. They've funded just in Norco $10.4 million. Applications submitted, applications approved, 720, so they're all in process. Energy saved, 78.8 million kilowatts. Emissions reduced, 21.4 tons. Water saved, 24.6 million gallons. So it's been an incredibly successful program. So that's something that I think we should actually be proud of. Norco's really taking advantage of it. And then another piece that they talked today, and they've been talking to us at WRCOG, is the community aggregation program. I don't know how much this will apply, but essentially what that means is we would set up a joint group that would purchase our electricity. We'd essentially become our own electric company, except that we would purchase it through Edison. They would continue to service the lines and do all those kinds of things. I think that's, what they would like to do is they would like to come and do a presentation before council, and I think Andy said that he would set that up. The RCA, I'd hoped to have books like this for everybody here, but this is a really incredible book that I wish we could get to all the residents about how to kind of do drought-resistant plants and stuff. It's put out by the Western Regional Water Board, and fantastic book. The GG, I sit on that advisory board for the funding and the bonds, and I just thought it might be interesting for people to know that essentially in every school in Norco, we now have security cameras. One of the downsides of the security cameras is they don't always, they're not nighttime lit, but whenever there's a problem, what they do is they put an extra light there very shortly, or maybe already now online, they couldn't tell me that. Every security camera now has a central location, which you can look at every single school. All the fencing upgrades have been done in every single school, and literally millions of dollars in the GG grant have finished that up. Highland, Norco Elementary is 10% complete. If you want to kind of see something pretty cool, watch that school go up. It looks really, really like it's going to be a wonderful school. It's a big problem right now traffic-wise, but it seems like people are getting through it pretty good. Norco Intermediate will be the next school that started, and that's going to be very exciting to see that school going up. The other thing that's been done in every single Norco school is the classroom drops. Those are the projectors that have come down. They've put in projectors, speakers, wall mounts, and whiteboards. So literally every single school has been upgraded. Now, I've heard from some of the teachers that were not my classrooms, so one of the things I'm looking at is trying to find out why there's sort of a schism. I'm sure that Ted will tag-team off of this, but ICSC was incredibly, in my opinion, successful. I'm sure Ted won't say this, but he manned the booth for two days, and he was nothing short of phenomenal. I mean, he was just energetic, and he really had it down. And then the rest of us, we just toured with RJ Brandis the first day, Andy, and Steve King, and Roger. Frankly, everywhere we went, everybody wants to hear about Silver Lakes. And I think that there's some things that are in the works, but I think that in coming months, people, well, truthfully, I was shocked. And I think in coming months, I think people are going to be very impressed with what we're bringing home. And then, just sort of more fun stuff, I attended today Taylor Dawkins' surprise where she was told that she is not only the state Gatorade Softball Player of the Year, but she, and there's 50 of them, she is actually the Gatorade National Softball Player of the Year. They pick one. She, and to let you, I mean, LeBron James was one of those. I mean, it's just Peyton Manning was one of those. And then in a couple of months, she gets to go to a huge to-do in Los Angeles where they choose the athlete of the Gatorade. That's from all 50 states, they choose one person. And she is very impressive. As you probably know, she's a cancer survivor. And what's really interesting is it's possible we may be the only high school. They think there might be three, but they think there may not be. We're the only school to have National Gatorade Players of the Year. We had Matt Hopgood, and we had Taylor. For a little town like Norco, that is absolutely incredible. So I'm very, very proud of that, and it was fun to see the girls. As you all know, they got robbed in the last game. No, I'm just kidding. But they did, they got robbed. You know what? Taylor has a strike zone, but she never throws anything in the middle. She throws it on the corners. And if you get an umpire that doesn't know what a corner is, you're in deep trouble. So anyway, but they ended up 33-1, and they're just a phenomenal group of girls. They've all got full rides going all over the country, and I was very proud of them. And then finally, Shay Anderson, as you probably all know, set two state records in track and field. The only person that beat her was the Gatorade Track and Field Person of the Year last year. Beat her by one step in one of the races, so I think that she actually would have been considered for track and field's Gatorade Player of the Year. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Kevin? Ted?
Well, I'm wearing my Norco baseball cap because, like Kevin, I'm proud of my alma mater, and, but I started off at high school graduation and listening to Principal Edmondson, and I know Robin was there naturally, along with Kevin and I. A lot of pride. You can see it in the parents. You see it in those that attend up there, the alumni that show up, that go to the graduation, and along with the students. You've got to, Robin, my hat's off to you because there's a bunch of good kids. Your teachers are doing a good job up there. The amount of accolades and things that this year's graduating class brought in this, it's just impressive when Principal Edmondson was reading off all the accomplishments in there. So Norco parents, you did good. We've changed in a little bit. We had our executive committee for the George A. Ingalls Memorial, Veterans Memorial, and I want to thank everyone that helped at the Memorial Day celebration. We honored those who served and who served and gave the ultimate sacrifice that day. Again, special thanks to the junior ROTC from the high school, and our new addition was the junior Marines. Those kids did excellent in the 21-gun salute, and I'm not going to belabor all the effort it took to get us to do it, but let me tell you, they did. You would think they'd done this for 20 years together. Those kids just put it together in the last minute in a week. So again, for those who showed up and showed support for all of our people and for all those who served, and those who are those who have lost persons that served, thank you. It's credit. I was told, we just had our meeting the other day, so I'm going to pre-warm my fellow council members. We're going to be looking to do something up there for the Gold Star Mothers Memorial, and also the POW MIA's up here in the near future. So if you see something, come across the diocese, don't get upset. We're going to try to get it donated and paid for that way. All right, so then, what else we got? May 25th, Councilwoman Grunmeyer, myself, met with animal control over a biosecurity program to be used up there at Ingalls and Citywide. Hopefully, we're going to, this is just the start. It's nothing scary. We just want to have a plan in action. And I was talking to Frankie last night, and he's working on it. So that way, we don't have anything that, if something does happen, we have a plan, and that's our whole point. As far as LAFCO meeting that was held in May, not the report that affects the city. I don't see Chad here, but Riqua meeting was canceled for us. It's, thank you again, Mayor Newton, for putting me on that board.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. And then, again, another kudos to Robin and everyone up there, and I know Berwin, you sit on the FFA board. What a good bunch of kids. And after sitting and doing interviews for scholarships, again, you can be proud, Robin, and I'm going to make your head swell, but I can tell, and if Sergeant Spratley was here, I'd tell him the same thing. The kids that you interview for scholarships that go through the FFA program and the junior ROTC program, they've got it down. They're very well, they know how to answer questions, they're very articulate, they've been through it, and I think that, kudos to you and your staff for making them aware of the interview process. Also attended at Silver Lakes, the Norco Posse's Queen Coronation was there for a short time before the banquet. Again, phenomenal bunch of kids doing the things that we want our kids to do. They're participating, and they're good citizens. And then, June 3rd, and I know Debbie, what did she tell us? Debbie, this is a nationally recognized barbecue. We're like-
Brewing queue.
Brewing queue. The barbecue here at Norco, and for those who know it, is on the top 10 in the nation that people are coming to. We had a group from Australia come here. So if you didn't make it out to the brewing queue on June 3rd, boo hoo to you because you missed a good time, okay? And good food. And then later that night, along with my fellow colleagues, we all went to T-ball. And again, it's so great to see kids doing stuff. So I'm very proud of them. And then I'm going to wait until, on the city council consent items, we'll talk about the international conference. I'll have Roger do a recap, but it's no vacation to go there standing. And I do appreciate standing in a booth because my knees can't handle walking on all that concrete. Thank you.
You weren't at the sports bar? The what? Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the memorial at Ingalls Memorial. Thank you to the executive committee and everyone that put that on. It was a wonderful ceremony. I was also able to attend the ceremony at Cresslon. Very good ceremony. I wish it was better attended. Our attendance blew theirs out of the water by a lot. Very, very good speakers at their ceremony, so that was a nice way to spend the afternoon. I was also able, along with the mayor, to attend the last youth advisory council meeting for that particular group of students as they went out and completed their term on that council. That group had a tough job because they were doing something nobody had done before, and so to a certain extent, I feel like they felt a little bit defeated in the fact that they didn't be, they weren't able to see some of their stuff come to fruition. But they have definitely laid a foundation for the groups that come after them to get some of the projects done. And I know for sure one or two of those things, like the Youth and Government Day and some of those things, are definitely going to happen in our opportunities for upcoming groups. So that was a good evening with them. Also went to the brewing queue. I waved to the mayor as he made an announcement. I was working with my students at that event. It's an event that we volunteered at since its inception, and it was good to see a very, very large group up there by the afternoon. Unload meeting also took place. It was our last one. Again, that kind of coincides with the school year. A few things for next year. We will be looking to try and get out to back-to-school nights and open houses and those things with some of our resources to share with parents. If we want to get to parents, which is what we want to do, we need to go to them. So I'll be looking to grab some committee members and anybody else that would be interested in joining, going out to schools for back-to-school nights and open houses to get those resources to parents where they need to be. And the City and Schools Committee meeting also took place. Since our last meeting, we were able to talk to them about some access to high school facilities for recreational purposes and some issues between the school district facilities and the city hall facilities, and doing some work jointly as far as security, parking lots, those types of things. Always a good meeting. And the biosecurity meeting was good, and we have a good start there, like Ted had said earlier. And then was able to attend a resident meeting with Lieutenant Brittick and some of his staff to go over some concerns that a neighborhood had, which was really eye-opening. And I would like to say thank you to staff publicly for taking extra time to meet with neighbors and residents over issues of concern for them. I hope all residents know, our staff goes above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to taking care of issues and really listening to the residents, and Lieutenant Brittick and his staff did that with a group of residents since our last meeting. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Robin. Berwin?
Yeah, I too attended the memorial. It was as usual. It was very good, very touching, and I think you did right by putting those three nurses into the memorial because they did give their lives in the line of duty. They've only had one commission meeting, how some starts next week. Last Friday, had the meeting with the Orange County, Riverside County, 91 freeway commission. We meet four times a year, twice in Corona and twice in Orange. They gave an update on the first seven weeks of the new 91 toll lanes that opened in March. They opened up 4,489 new accounts. That's the little transponder you get. They answered 93,936 calls on phone and computer. The highest traffic day on the whole deal for seven weeks was 49,588 vehicles. That's going both directions. And they had, in the seven weeks, they had 1,873,000 total trips since they reopened the 91 as a complete freeway. They've already had problems that they're trying to figure out with all these new transponders and people trying to use the express lanes. They're having big jam-ups where you get into the pay lanes, causing several minutes of delay for everybody, and everybody's complaining about it. So they're trying to figure out how they're going to handle all that, but they were really overwhelmed with the amount of vehicles that they had, use that in the first seven weeks because they had predicted 819,000, and it almost doubled that on that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Berwin. Well, outside of all the shared community events, the week before, Councilmember Bash and myself, well, I got the history lesson. We attended the Norco Intermediate School and went through the history exhibit with all the students and gave them all certificates, and we had a good time. And those kids put a lot of work into that, so it was well worth it and well appreciated. Last week, Roger Grody, City Manager Andy Acoro, and myself went and visited a new business in town, WB Powell. They're over on Park Ridge Avenue. It's a 40,000-square-foot- It's a 40,000 square foot facility, approximately 60 employees. And welcomed them to Norco. And then we took a tour of their plant operations. And Steve, they were very complimentary of your staff. And we welcomed them to the city and I think they felt that way. So a very positive response and that's something that we just, I'm glad that we keep on doing this because that is such a great help. Tomorrow night, I have CDA board meeting, so nothing to report right now. But I'm going to change things a little bit around, make this a business item. We have concerts in the park coming up. And this Friday is yard sale, so I'm going to do the first one. And then the following week, or in two weeks, it'll be Crazy Kirk. And Berwin Hannah wanted to emcee that show. And then I had a request for the Eagles Tribute Band by Councilmember Hoffman, whenever that comes up. So Robin and Kevin. I wasn't there. I don't remember. I may have been there, but I don't remember. Yeah, there'll be, I think, three then. And we'll have to double up. But I'm going to let the two of you work it out, your choices, okay? But at least this will get us through the first couple of weeks. And I think that's enough of, we've had plenty to do and we have plenty more coming up during the next couple of weeks. Moving on, item two, city council consent items. Does any members care to? Lenny?
I have some. Two C and two G.
C and G?
Yes.
Kevin? Anyone else?
I was going to-
Entertained motion to approve the rest?
Move approve the rest. Approve the rest.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Hoffman?
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. Item two C, Kevin?
More than anything, what I would like to get out to the public is that there's been some questions about where the city of Norco is investing their money. And there's a lot of confusion and not, I don't think so much on our side, but what I want people to make sure that they know is that I believe that Gina and Andy are totally open, but you have to access them. And I think that what I would like to see is, when you get some spare time, but maybe in the next couple of months, what we're approving tonight, if we approve it, is a general policy in a way. But I'd like to maybe see something more specific or I'm open to suggestions to how do we, when residents ask questions, what can we present them so that they're totally clear as to where the money's going? One of the big confusions is there's a, there's, I don't want to say confusion, there's just, investing in the private sector is entirely different from investing in the public sector. So while there's a lot of the same names, people sometimes don't quite understand that they're apples to oranges. They just happen to be called Fannie Mae or Fannie Mae, whatever. And so I don't, I don't know if I really want to do anything other than to make sure people know that my experience is, is that both of the staff in charge of this are very open to meeting with you. But maybe in the next couple of months, Andy, you might be able to put something together that talks about how we invest or something you're comfortable with. What do you think?
Well, so you know, we presented a city council on a quarterly basis, a quarterly investment report. Their quarterly investment report is very comprehensive in that it shows every bit of every penny that the city has and where the monies are invested. Rather than having the next quarterly investment report as a consent calendar item, I suppose, we can have it discussed as a, as a business item in that way that will give anybody, everybody an opportunity to ask questions pertaining to the city's investment portfolio.
I mean, the issue isn't, because I know where the money is going. It's the confusion is, is if you're in the private sector and the public sector, that's the confusion, the apples to oranges. And I think that maybe, I think that's a great suggestion that the next time, we're able to have an open discussion about exactly what part of that vehicle we're using to invest our money, how it differs from maybe the private sector. You know what I'm saying? And then I think that that would be a good solution.
That is, that is actually the item before you tonight, which is approval of the city's investment policy.
Yeah. No, no, I get it. It's a policy. I understand.
And that policy lays out the parameters that the city must comply with respect to investing city funds. Clearly, we follow the requirements of the government code. And that government code says where you can invest, the percentage of the portfolio that you can invest in various securities. And when those requirements change, the policies are brought to you and we make the necessary changes. Consistently, our investment portfolio has complied always with the requirements of that government, government code and the city's adopted investment policy. But again, I think the one issue that has been brought to my attention is the confusion between whether the city is investing in stocks versus fixed income security, Fannie Mae specifically. The city as a government entity, a public entity, is not allowed to invest in equity securities, meaning stocks. What the city has in its portfolio is fixed income security bonds issued by the Federal National Mortgage Association. And those investments are guaranteed 100% by the full faith of the United States government. That means those are tripled investment instruments and that has essentially no risk. The primary purpose of city investment is to ensure safety. That's the number one objective. The city, public agencies are precluded from chasing returns on investment. What we do first and foremost is to make sure that the city's investment is secure, especially coming after Orange County bankruptcy many, many years ago. And the reason that that happened was back then, government agencies were allowed to invest in, in some certain risky investment instruments that caused Orange County to actually lose a lot of money and eventually had to declare bankruptcy for, for those practices. But again, we, next time we present our investment portfolio, we'll be glad to have more detailed discussions.
So one of the, you brought us something very interesting. You used requirement, policy at the same time. And one of the questions is that, well, these are just policies. We don't have to follow them. Which, and understand, you're singing to the choir. I'm doing this so that I can, I'm trying to get this out to the public to assure them that, that we have certain guidelines to follow. But requirement, policy, what is it in terms of the statutes in the state code and federal code?
Again, we follow government code, State of California-
Are those requirements, laws, or just policies or guidelines?
Every, every local government, cities and public agencies are required to follow this code with respect to how public, public funds are invested. There are no deviations from that. And part of what we go through as part of our annual audit process too, is the independent auditors do verify to make sure that our investments do comply with the requirements of the government code. And when we bring this quarterly investment reports to you, we do show how those investments comply with the requirements of the code. Again, we'd be glad to have more detailed discussions on those when, when those come back to the city council. I think the next one will be coming to you in the month of July.
Right. Thank you, Andy. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second. Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. Item two G?
So I pulled that in anticipation that Mayor Portem Hoffman would pull it and, and that maybe Roger could speak to the point. So how do you want to do this, Ted?
No, I want to recap.
Yep, let us know.
So everybody understands that, no, we were recording. I think they kind of liked the party.
You know what? You can't party there because you have to walk those rooms, which are miles and miles and miles. By the time the night's over, you're so tired you go right to bed.
Actually, this conference takes the joy out of Las Vegas. So just to recap quickly, and I do want to thank Mayor Portem and Councilmember Bash for their, their efforts there. This conference is the largest gathering of retailers, shopping center developers and commercial brokers in the world, 37,000 strong. This was the largest attendance since the Great Recession. Also, about 100 municipalities were present with their own exhibits, Norco being one of them. And I, I feel that we were extremely well-received and I think you all should be quite proud of the Norco booth, the exhibit and the materials that we had available. In the past, when we've attended this, Silver Lakes has always been nothing more than a concept. We've talked a lot about it, but we had no reportable results. This year, we were able to report to these retailers and hotel developers that last year, 750,000 people attended Silver Lakes events and that this year, over a million will. And that build out, that number will reach 3 million people. Those numbers are very persuasive and it was clear in these meetings with especially hotel developers and operators, that we have a very compelling story to tell. We did concentrate on, on hotel operators. We met with nine or 10 different companies representing over 50 brands. And we were quite well-received because of this strong story. People were intrigued. People realized that we had enough demand to satisfy probably three or four new hotels in town. And now it is up to staff to meet the challenge and act on those leads. And that's exactly what we'll be doing. The planning director and I met with two of those leads today, in fact. And so I think it was a very successful conference. It does cost a little bit of money to go, but I think that the relationships that are built at these and the dividends that are paid over time are invaluable. Thank you very much. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Staff?
Go ahead, Robin.
Robin?
Roger, I have a couple of questions for you. At the end of the report, it talked about the relationship and transforming leads into commitments. So my question as the economic coordinator is, do you have timelines and some SMART goals set for those kind of commitments so that we're seeing a return on our investment for that particular conference?
It's a difficult question to answer. Many of the, many of these deals between the initial, initial introduction and actual dirt and being moved is probably 18 to 24 months typically. So it's, it, you know, economic development is a, is a discipline where it requires a lot of patience, unfortunately. But these are leads that I'm confident some of them will be realized and hopefully we'll be able to, at least on a biannual basis, bring you some updates where we can actually mention, you know, names and actual sites. So I know that was not really an answer because it's difficult to establish an actual timeline. But I would say that certainly, you know, within, within 12 months, we should have some, I would hope that we have some preliminary commitments from some of these parties, that they would be coming to Norco. And many of them are very interested and, you know, there are a lot of variables, of course, the economy, the fact that the hotel industry itself is in a, this is like the seventh year in a row of record activity and that's not going to last forever. This was actually a very good year to go because this is kind of a perfect window of opportunity, not only for the industry, but for us with Silver Lakes, you know, coming online.
Okay. The second question I have for you, obviously, there's the draw with Silver Lakes for the hotels. What other kind of interest is there in Norco other than hotels so we can get some diversification?
We, the sit-down restaurant industry is not particularly well-represented at this conference, but we did meet with a number of brokers who represent some of those organizations and tried, we made the case for Norco, not just, part of it is Silver Lakes, obviously, but there's also a more organic demand that has grown. I believe there's a pent-up demand in Norco for sit-down dining opportunities. And those are, those are leads that we will definitely be following up. I would say our first priority was hotels, but we want to be aggressive in terms of dining opportunities as well. That clearly is, is something we need to complement, not just visitors, but local residents. It's a great amenity for them. No reason you, you shouldn't have to leave town to have a good meal.
Thank you.
Ted?
I guess mine's more of a comment than a question since I spent a week with Roger and Steve. I just want to compliment Roger and Kelly, and if we're not careful, some other cities are going to steal her. This was our driver. And you have to understand, scoring Norco and they went and got the TV for flat-screen TV and showed soccer playing. I worked the booth last year and just so you had an idea, so we're not out there just having a good time. We didn't get the traffic in that booth last year as we got this year. And the reason being is when you see a big screen like this behind us and the fact that, you know, that, that we use Silver Lakes, you know, kind of what we hoard off of them, essentially. You know, our brochures, we're sitting there, shows a number of visitors coming through. But just so you understand, we did balance this out. You'll see Silver Lakes, but you also see Sixth Street and the horses are there. Because we knew when we went in there, we talked about this before we went in there, without the catch. And that's what we had to do. It's just like using anything else, you got to use good bait to bring them in. And before, we had a nice display, a nice collage of all the businesses and what we thought was important to the hotels and to the restaurants and the service industries. It wasn't catching it. This caught it. And yeah, I was busy in the booth, but I enjoyed it. And what you're asked, Robin, is what do we have and what are we applying on? We went out there with an idea of taking 15 sites in the city of Norco that we were trying to promote and sell. The hardest problem we have, we don't own the land, very little of it. It's all owned by private, private property owners. So we're actually trying to be the middle guy and get these people in with these investors and these property owners to put these programs and these packets together. Some property owners are very appreciative. Others think they're on a gold mine and they're waiting for the platinum to come in. And that's just it. Some of them are unrealistic as to what they can get for their properties. So, but we got to keep doing it. You asked about restaurants? And when you sit there in a booth, you listen to a lot of people and you ask them. And Roger's right. What you and I or some of our older generation think of a sit-down restaurant isn't what the millennials are doing. And you have to understand the restaurant business, they're catering to those younger crowd because they're looking at that 30-year investment- catering to those younger crowd because they're looking at that 30-year investment on 10 or 30-year investment. And those millennials want something good food, they want it quick, or they take out, or they call it in and have it brought to their home. They're not into the sit-downs, and that's what's changing a lot of these service business and restaurant things. So that's, and I got that a lot from the people. But as far as Silver Lakes, I cannot tell you the number of people from the Midwest, these are cities, Midwest, up in the Northwest, up in Washington, that asks us, "How the heck did you guys do this and pull this off, having Silver Lakes and that complex, that big soccer complex in your little city?" So it is, we can be proud of ourselves, what we did in the council before us, and they're looking at this thing. So just good idea, and I wasn't going to, just too away from your storm, but I do want to, at the end of the meeting, I'm probably going to bring something up because we need to work on Sixth Street also. So I'll bring it up later in the meeting about that. Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments. Restaurants will come. Restaurants will come with hotels. Our goal there, I mean, this is just my credo, generate business that protects and fosters the lifestyle of Norco, does not impact it, i.e. leave money and leave. We specifically went after hotels. One of the things Andy and I have talked about is looking for things that are high-impact. A restaurant, a good restaurant, will not generate very much money for a city, but it will be attracted by the hotel. One of the things we're encountering, and it's just a fact, is that all the negative publicity, nobody wanted to buy property in Norco. Now, when they want to buy it, it's five times as much as it was before, but we are overcoming that. There's been a lot of interest already in the city of Norco, which is proprietary, and which hotels have tried to buy certain pieces of land and restaurants, but they want so much money for it, they just move on to the next. Disney was a classic example. That's a project six years in the making. The thing about, the question to Roger, and that's something that's really tough because when you're doing that and trying and making these connections, I mean, believe it or not, we worked, we went to several places, Roger organized it very well, and Steve, the most important meeting lasted 30 seconds. That was a handshake, and we can't really yet talk about it because we don't know where it's going, but you just never know when you're talking to these people what's going to happen. In terms of, what I look at, in terms of what Roger's doing, is you talk about diversification. Six years ago, we had no diversity in the city at all. Now we have Hobby Lobby, Tractor Supply. It's, I mean, Berwin brought us Tractor Supply. We never know where these things are going to come from, but what I look at more than anything is I look at this annual report. And basically, what's happened is for the last three years, we had a banner year, one of the best years we've ever had three years ago, and we have topped it every single year. So I think the criteria to know what's happening basically is the cold, hard, what is happening in terms of, I mean, we've got the Stater Brothers being put in, the new one, we have another development that's happening, there's a bunch of developments in town, and for me, that is the proof and the pudding. The difference between the last time we went and the time we went this time is exactly what Ted said, is we had really nothing to sell. And, but at the same time, the leads from that, some of those are just now bearing fruition in terms of people trying to figure out ways to get Norco. We ran into people, one huge restaurant that is desperately trying to get into Norco, but we don't know how to help them do that. So until we figure those things out. But I thought it was really successful. We'll find out, probably in six months due year, just how successful. One of the things that I would recommend, whoever goes next year, is that we don't consolidate. Some cities consolidated their booths, so you'd have eight, nine, 10 cities. We visited, and in our opinion, what happened is it just mushed everybody together. I think that our booth was really well-received, and the truth is, you know who made the booth? Was the television and Ted. I mean, Ted's like the Energizer Bunny. He's up and down. I keep saying his knee is bad, but every time we went there, he's like, you know, handing out the stuff we had to hand out, and so I think he did a terrific job. And then the other side of that is I got to see another side of our city manager. And our city manager, along with RJ Brandis, who went with us for a day. And Andy and RJ really worked well together in terms of just selling Norco in a very low-key and positive way, and it was really outstanding. So I want to commend you. RJ, you know, because he's got this huge project he's sitting on, is like an elephant, but Andy and him were able to work together very well, and I was very impressed by that. So anyway, that's all I have to say, and thank you to you guys. And Kelly, of course, she's phenomenal.
So my only comments, Roger, are that on this item, looking at the costs expended, and that I think are very competitive numbers, and that if you all, if you and Steve already today were able to make contact and tour the city with a prospective developer, right with that, that's money well-spent. And the other judge, and maybe this is just kind of my opinion, Robin, sometimes economic development is hard to gauge, but one of those gauges also is our per capita spending. And that this last quarter, that I believe at per capita, we're like $5,500, which is way above county average and state average. So even though it's at a plateau, I think it's a much better number than, that we see locally. So it makes me feel we're headed in the right direction, but not going to cut you any slack, Roger. Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilmembers Hannah, Gronmeyer, Bash.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, public comments. Any cards, Cheryl?
Yes, Mayor.
You may call the first one?
Yes. First speaker is Justin DeWell from Assemblymember Cervantes's office.
Evening, Justin.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. Good, good to be here. First of all, just want to extend congratulations to Norco High School softball team and Ms. Taylor Dawkins. Our office has been following them closely, and it's amazing achievements. So moving on to legislative affairs, it's been very busy up in Sacramento. Last week was the deadline to pass bills out of the House of Origin. So eight of Assemblymember Cervantes's bills were passed on the Assembly floor and have moved on to the Senate. And I'll just mention a few of them that I don't think I've mentioned much here at City Council. So her bill, AB 91, which would make carpool lanes in Riverside County open to all vehicles during off-peak hours, that passed on the Assembly floor. 162, which would make more small businesses eligible for tax, a tax cut through the California Competes Tax Program, that passed on the Assembly floor. AB 193, which would allow applicants to obtain a rebate of up to $1,800 for purchasing a used, eligible, high-efficiency vehicle, that passed on the Assembly floor. As well as AB 410, which addresses the teacher shortage that we have in our region and throughout the state by prohibiting local educational agencies from charging prospective teachers any fee for participating in training that's required for them to obtain their credential. And finally, AB 1618, passed on the Assembly floor. That would create a process to certify nonprofit organizations that provide services to veterans and create a competitive grant process for those organizations. So those are just a few, and, you know, if you have any further questions, please get in touch with us, get in touch with me.
Can we ask him a question afterwards or whatever?
I think afterwards, we've...
Sell sites?
Oh.
Let's go ahead, and if we have any questions for you, we'll do it afterwards.
Sure.
Otherwise, yeah, it's public comments.
Uh huh.
Appreciate the updates, always.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Overstreet?
Good evening, Pat.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Well, continuing to sing the praises of our great little town, we had a wonderful ranch tour. Good crowd, lots of kitties riding ponies, plenty of hot dogs sold from Banning, Beaumont, Yorba Linda, Eastville, Corona, and Norco. Didn't quite get any, that I noticed, from San Diego or Santa Barbara, but if we get Westways Magazine again, maybe we can hit the big mark. But I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, if we could get you to draw the winner of the rural blanket?
I'd be more glad to. Please stand up. I think we can also help with the contact with Westways.
Well, I hope so.
Magazine. Deep enough? Wow, I can't believe it, Greg Newton. Of course. Let me, yeah, let me put that one back.
It's a resident from Yucaypa, which makes me happy, and one who spread the love. Gail Shimmer, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Pat.
Rob Woss?
Evening, Rob.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Rob Woss. I'm at 3192 Corona Avenue. I've been there since 1985. Since that time, I've been calling and asking, and please, and can I can verify this, our street is probably the worst street in Norco. I go to Mexico on a regular basis for my cancer treatment. The streets, especially Corona Avenue between Fourth and Sixth, is the worst of potholes that this city of Ensenada, you know, is looking good. Through the grapevine, I heard that we finally are on the short list to have our street repaved, because when they put that sewer line in, they only did part of it, and, you know, it's kind of half-assed. But, I mean, in front of my house, and Kathy, where her mom lives, every time I see her, "You're on the list, you're on the list." Okay. And I hope that this time, it will really happen. Is that the truth?
I'll say this, that our Public Works Director is not here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
But, and let me confirm it with him, but I believe in our CIP, it showed June, July for Corona Avenue from Fifth Street South to...
Frontier.
Frontier.
Okay.
But I don't want to confirm that without having the Public Works Director
All right.
Make that statement of fact.
I'll be seeing you.
But I do agree with you, it knocks the fillings out of your teeth.
All right. Okay, then the second thing I have is this, and I'm here on behalf of my clients, who own the property on Second Street. The sewer rates for that particular little street went sky-high. In some cases, it even doubled. And when I called this morning, and the lady at the water department told me, said, "Yeah, but, you know, that's because the property now is commercial." Now, my owners told me, "Hey, if they make it commercial, we'd be more than happy to pay that extra sewer, but make us commercial." Because otherwise, what is it? You are being charged as being commercial, but you still are residential. We all know the little street I'm talking about, which if the city would buy it, or it would be commercial, that would leave, you know, get rid of the eyesore, because, you know, even though I manage it, I try to do the best I can with the funds available. I have cleaned the street up, but the street is in constant disarray because of the big trucks from Waste Management, they turn around there, and when these three wheels start grinding, and two of them stand still, and it's tracking. I fixed that street five times. The last estimate was $30,000. Well, it's a private street, so I cannot come to the city and say, "Hey, give me some help." Waste Management says, "Okay, what can we do?" I said, "Bring a smaller truck," or drive in, like they do in Frontier. They drive in, and they back out. They don't turn around. Granted, it is a little harder to go onto Second Street, but the city was kind enough to put, leave clear, so it is not that they have to sit there and wait. They can just go on.
So is your question, because I need to have you wrap it up.
Okay.
Is it on the zoning for commercial?
Well...
Or your request with Waste Management?
It has been on the zoning, but the city has this rule that we don't want any commercial on this side of Hamler or the freeway.
I would...
So are we, basically what I'm asking, can we go back to residential for the sewer, or are you going to change the zoning to commercial?
I'll let you ask the, afterwards, the question of Steve King for the proper zoning in that area, because I...
It is residential.
I can't comment whether it's residential or commercial for right now.
Steve knows what I'm talking about. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I'm assuming it's residential.
Yeah. Thank you, Council.
Jeff Cahen?
Oh, okay. Hi, Jeff.
Good evening, Greg. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was going to talk about summer concerts.
Go right ahead.
You took care of that. You already did your assignments, so thank you for that. So I'll just remind the public that we have our first concert on Friday at 6:30 at Pike's Peak Park. Yard Sale is coming back for their fifth year. They're a high-energy, great entertainment band, a great way to start off our summer concerts. So thank you for having your assignments taken care of. I'll leave you with this fun fact. Next Wednesday is Flag Day, so I would encourage all the residents to please fly your flags, as we love to be a patriotic town. September 18th, 2014, was the day that we installed the flagpole and flew the flag the first time at the Veterans Memorial. Next Wednesday happens to be the 1,000th day since that's happened. So let's celebrate Flag Day by having our flags out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Thank you, Cheryl. Now move into public hearings, item 5A. And Gina.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I wanted to let you know, I did look up in the CIP, there's rehab and overlay for Corona, Fourth to Fifth, for $350,000 for this next year.
Good. It was just more of the start date also. That was, that's a Chad thing. Thank you, Gina.
Well, Honorable Mayor, let's see, I should turn everything on here. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, during the spring, we've had two workshops, primarily in May, covering the Preliminary Budget and Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Year 17 and 18, which begins July 1st and ends June 30th. In this public hearing tonight, I will be presenting a brief PowerPoint covering the budget drivers and key changes incorporated during the workshops. The recommended total budget for Fiscal Year 17, 18 for the city is $38.1 million. This includes the operating budgets of General Fund, Water, Sewer, Gas Tax, the National Pollutant, NPDS, miscellaneous grants, CDBG, and AQMD funds. The General Fund is the city's primary operating fund with a total projected expenditures of $20.4 million and revenues of $18.4 million. The deficit, as resulting from the difference, will result in a $2 million decrease in reserves. This is mainly due to one-time infrastructure improvements and ongoing public safety funding, as well as increased traffic enforcement services. The estimated June 30th, 2017 fund balance is $10.9 million, and the projected fund balance at June 30th, this coming year, is projected to be $8.8 million. For the Water Fund, the total estimated Water Fund expenditures are $10 million, and total estimated revenues are $10.7 million, for a positive balance. For the Sewer Fund, for the Sewer Fund, the total estimated Sewer Fund expenditures are $6.2 million, and revenues are $7.5 million. And in your packet, we have a summary of the balances overall. And in terms of the summary of the key operating budget drivers, the proposed budget maintains existing non-safety service levels with no new programs or full-time employees. The budget provides funding for an estimated 9% for annual sheriff services and funding As a result, the increase overall is $420,000. A 3% salary increase is included, plus some position adjustments, for a total of $71,000 for the general fund, and additional $23,000 for all other funds for the fiscal 17, 18 budget. City employees are continuing to pay their full share of the employee portion of pension contribution. The unfunded liability for miscellaneous plan or non-safety employees has increased from $8.3 million to $9.7 million due primarily to lower investment earnings as of June 30th, 2015. The budget provides for a total of $400,000 to pay down post-retirement healthcare liability. Although the accrued liability has increased, the increasing value of assets from $6 million to $7.3 million has resulted in a projected decrease in the unfunded liability. In this new budget, we also have included an increase in our water utility costs for $249,000. And the city is discontinuing a subsidy of $75,000, a transfer to the National Pollutant Discharge and Elimination System Fund, due to an available fund balance that can address the gap that we have in fiscal year 17, 18. The general fund revenue budget anticipates a $138,000 increase in sales tax, a $43,000 increase in property tax, and an anticipated decrease in $108,000 reimbursement for the former redevelopment agency employees from the State Department of Finance in an ongoing dispute. We are hoping to recover those funds. We are also anticipating a slight increase of only 1.7% in franchise fees due to a new provider providing waste collection for the California Rehabilitation Center, and we are hoping to collect those fees as well. The water revenues are based on a July 1st rate increase. The working capital fund balance is estimated to increase to $9.7 million by June 30th, 2018. Current water CIP projects total $31.9 million over the next five years, with a need to identify $26 million in revenues as we move forward. The operating reserves require $2.1 million, and the rate stabilization reserve requires $2 million by 2026. Our sewer fund revenues projected on a current rate structure and expenditures, sewer fund working capital fund balance is estimated to be $6.9 million by June 30th, 2018, with current sewer CIP projects totaling over $18.8 million, with a need to identify $11 million in revenue as we move forward. The sewer operating reserve target is $1.2 million and is currently funded with the working Now, we'll discuss the changes since our last workshop that were discussed in the workshop to the proposed budget for fiscal year 17, 18. We did a final review of revenue projections since we last met and added supplemental requests to the proposed budget. The general fund revenues increased by $61,000, due mostly to projected increase in sales tax of $30,000. Adjustments to other revenue categories were not significant, and I should add that we anticipate our sales tax to not increase as much as it has in the past. We do have a new auto dealership in town, and we've seen a significant increase in sales tax as a result, but we do see that plateauing. The general fund expenditures have an increase consisting of, as indicated earlier, the 3% salary increase, plus adjustments for $71,000. A transfer of $530,000 for the Wayne Macon Sports Complex, electrical infrastructure project that replaces underground electrical and eliminates power interruptions. A transfer of $55,000 for improvements at the Court on Staging Area, and these funds are anticipated to be reimbursed as storm-related damage in the future. A transfer of $10,000 for public art at the George Ingalls Equestrian Event Center. We are also adding supplemental requests, including the purchase of spider boxes for $20,000. These will be used to distribute power to vendors and RV camping clients at the George Ingalls Equestrian Event Center, with $6,000 in annual revenue, allowing for full recovery in four years. And we are also interested in beginning a five-year funding plan to replace a 17-year-old John Deere tractor for Moreno and Clark Arenas. Total cost is $77,000, with the first-year budget cost at $15,455. The budget includes the addition of the following part-time positions: two part-time maintenance workers responsible for horse trail maintenance on the weekends for $31,000; one part-time facilities coordinator to assist the facility supervisor at the George Ingalls Equestrian Event Center for $15,000; and one part-time maintenance worker to provide additional facility maintenance for an additional $15,000. One part-time permit technician, resulting in $85,000 impact to the general fund, additional costs are in other funds, and this individual would provide engineering front counter assistance. This table highlights the status of the 16, 17-year-end budget with revenues exceeding expenditures by $817,000. The surplus is added to the June 30th, 2016 fund balance for a new total of $10.9 million. This represents a 61% reserve level of the year-end estimated expenditures of $17.7 million. The fiscal year 2017, 2018 general fund expenditure budget of $20.4 million and revenues of $18.4 million results in a net gap of $2 million between total estimated revenues and total estimated expenditures. The gap is proposed to be covered by using reserves or fund balance. The net gap of $2 million includes an estimated structural deficit of $1.4 million, which is the difference between these two, ongoing revenues and total reoccurring expenditures. The estimated fund balance of $8.8 million represents 43.2% of the total recommended general fund expenditure budget. While this amount still represents a healthy fund balance, this balance will continue to decrease based on current revenue and expenditure trends. This concludes the presentation for the public hearing. If you have any questions...
I guess, thank you. It's a lot of work, thank you, Gina. Berwin? Any questions at this time?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Robin?
Oh, wait.
Ted?
That is nice. I'm looking at, and there's certain things that I know we have to have, and basically on the budget, and what I'm looking at is the changes since your budget workshop and the general fund expenditure increases. Some of these I have a little bit of problem with. I'm looking at the transfer of the $55,000 for improvements for the Court on Staging Area, and I know, Brian, you've probably talked to FEMA about that one.
Yeah, we've actually had a meeting with FEMA this week, and we're meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers tomorrow morning.
So there's no guarantee that they're going to refund us those funds?
No, but the fact that we had an inspection is very encouraging, because we've gone through three revisions and reviews, from local to federal review, to now an inspector coming out to look at our two projects that we've submitted on, and that's a good sign when they come out to do that, otherwise they could have denied us a long time ago. So we're positive on it, but there is no guarantee.
And my question, and what it comes to, and I wish Chad was here, the horse trail maintenance, and that's what this is for, could that $55,000 come out of the $200,000 in the CIP fund that's there, or are they coming back out of the general fund?
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
I don't think so. $220,000 that is left in the Trails Improvement Fund, designated for trail and capital projects for that matter. This is basically maintenance. If it's trail...
That's the question I'm asking. If we can't take it out, we can't take it out. It has to be fixed. It's the major trail in that Court on Station area, so hopefully FEMA will pay for it. Okay, that checks for that one. I'm going to keep going on this one, Brian. I still have a problem of asking people when we're sitting here with almost a $2 million deficit, I mean shortfall on this, and we can't get our roads fixed, and we're hiring more people. Two part-time maintenance workers responsible for horse trail maintenance on the weekends. I'm still trying to figure out where you're going to get court, sheriff's court workers. We had five up there on Sunday, and you're telling me that you're going to have 10 a day? I just don't see it.
It's not, that's not always the case. However, we have the ability to request workers from Orange County, San Bernardino County, as well as LA County. In my past, I have run programs like this where I receive from multiple counties, community service workers from the courts.
Okay.
Currently, we do not make those requests from those other counties.
Okay. And then I'm going to go, I don't have a problem with the spider boxes, because that's actually a revenue generator over the time. I don't have a problem with trying to get Patty help, because the woman spends 80 hours a week up there trying to do things that she should have had help a long time ago. But my issue comes back to the one part-time maintenance worker. Again, I'm going to throw the same thing at you. We don't have the funds, and I don't see that, if you're trying to have a permanent maintenance worker up there, and when you read it initially, it was to help the crels and put up things like that. Essentially, I'm, you know, for those of you that don't know, I'm giving you the crels to put them up. And I'd rather, I've been trained, and I'd rather have, if you're going to have some court workers, give me some court workers, and let's start our Friends of Ingalls program that you and I talked about last year, because I think you're going to have enough volunteers up here to do that, if that's what you want them for. If not, then I think we need to relook at your scheduling and seeing, you've got two full-timers up there now. They shouldn't be overlapping if we have to hire another person at this point. So that's where I'm on that one. And I think last time we had our budget thing, I talked about the John Deere tractor. Yes, it needs to be replaced. I don't, I understand that. And it needs to be replaced, because it was never maintained. My issue with it is, do we ever check on the lease?
Yeah, there's some opportunities for lease zone. If approved, we'll bring back those options for council's consideration.
Okay, so, and then...
There's actually more than one program. There's a lease to own. There's also a purchase to own from previous leased vehicles as tractors or equipment. So we might be able to buy a used tractor with low time on that engine that's already been reconditioned as well.
Because we bought that one used, and...
So those are all options for us that we can bring back for when, if we put it into the budget process, then we have, staff has the ability to go look at those things and bring those back to council for action.
I do have a heartache with the $77,000 for a tractor, and here's why.
Retail value at...
No, no, Brian. If you're talking about a John Deere, yes, but there are other brands out there that are just as capable, that are around that $50,000 range, and with, just along with the bells and whistles, because I've done the homework on them, and that's where I have a hard time trying to get, we're sitting here with a brand-new John Deere, $77,000, and why do we need a Cadillac up there? Okay, I want a Chevy or Ford, which is just as fine.
And we'd be happy to explore those options.
And that's what I'm getting at, is I don't think we've done enough exploring on this. I wouldn't mind holding this off as an adjustment in January when we do budget adjustments. I just have a heartache trying to do it right now and throwing $15,000 out of our budget, and again, because we're on shortfall.
If we could, Ted, let's keep to ask questions, and we can come back after discussion on these items.
Okay, that's all my questions, all right. So, okay, that's all I have on those. Thank you.
One clarification with respect to this item. The item before you tonight is approval to set aside $15,000 this next fiscal year for potential replacement of a tractor, which is estimated to cost $77,000. That is not a budget impact of $77,000. Before the city goes out, staff goes out to purchase, there is a purchasing process that we have to follow, and that item would come back to you for approval. So again, just want to make it clear that the item before you tonight, tonight as part of the budget process is asking for $15,455 to be set aside towards future acquisition of this equipment.
Thank you.
Kevin, questions of staff?
I just have a couple. Just a clarification on the 530, that's basically because a kid was nearly electrocuted, correct? That's what prompted all this? I want to make sure, right? He got shocked, so we need to kind of replace that.
The infrastructure for Wayne Macon is a result of replacement of the backbone that is at a point where it is creating a liability for the city.
Right. And then I had asked you what the, I mean, I realize we're over budget, and I have some questions about some of that stuff, but I had asked you what the lights would cost. It seems to me that in the long run, maybe even in the short run, what would the cost of replacing, also replacing the lights be?
To go with a program that's identified like a muskle lighting system, and putting muskle poles and new lighting in that system, we're looking at about $275,000. We're at, if we go with an LED muskle lighting system, we're a little over $300,000. What I got back from the consultant today is we're looking at about a 16-year payback on that, if we were to go with a muskle LED system. So basically, for what you put in, eventually, over 16 to 20 years, you would reimburse yourself back what that cost is by the delta difference of cost savings on energy.
And do you have to replace the poles for that system?
To put that system in, you would need to put new poles in.
And then, would those lights be safer for the kids?
Well, the lights themselves are not a problem. The fact that the lights that we have currently are older, and we do replace them as we need to, you're going to a higher efficiency light if you go to a different type of lighting system. If you go to the new LED lights, you're going to a very efficient light that has very, what I would say, much more minimum impact as far as energy use. So you're going to return your capital back, but it's going to take you 16 to 20 years to do that.
Okay. The part-time workers, maintenance workers, the question I have to that is, we've really been asked to clean up trails, and they wouldn't just be trails, they would be weeds along our fence lines, things like that. Would it be possible to do a flyer on this for, let's say, three months, six months, and you come back to us and show us what the improvements are? Because we get a lot of complaints that in the public access areas that we own, would that be something you might be able to do to see how it's going? Photographs, whatever?
This was an alternative, because we don't have any, our maintenance to our citywide trail system is fairly minimal. And this was an alternative to bring that forward, to give us an opportunity to do something, and we tried to do it as the least expensive possible process of doing that. Yes, staff is more than willing to do a trial program, bring back information back to the council and share with you whether it's working or it's not working. But yes, in addition to that, it's not just the trails, it's replacement of maintenance on trails, fencing, it's also removing in that right-of-way stickers off of signs, it's removing graffiti, it's doing weed abatement, it's a lot of things that are in our public right-of-way entry points to our city, and just doing more of a beautification program where there is nobody assigned to those type of duties on weekends as it is right now.
And to Roger, would that be one of those intangibles, that when people come to our city, they go, "By the way, I spent two days in Los Angeles, Hollywood Boulevard. People that think Norco doesn't look nice should go there." Anyway, and it smells, it's terrible. But is that one of those intangibles, that you would think to beautify your entrances and keep them looking nice? Does that help your business climate?
Well, national retailers definitely drive the neighborhood...
It's a lot of things that are in our public right-of-way entry points to our city, and just doing more of a beautification program where there is nobody assigned to those type of duties on weekends as it is right now.
And to Roger, would that be one of those intangibles that when people come to our city, they go, "By the way, I spent two days in Los Angeles, Hollywood Boulevard. People that think Norco doesn't look nice should go there." Anyway, and it smells, it's terrible. But is that one of those intangibles that you would think to beautify your entrances and keep them looking nice? Does that help your business climate?
Well, national retailers definitely drive the neighborhoods. They look at the quality of the environment because they want to be in places that meet their standards, so to speak. So, yes, it definitely has an impact.
And that's all I have right now. Oh, another for Andy. No guarantee, but the reality is, is we don't have any guarantee on both our expenditures or revenues, that this is a projection, right? These are projections.
A projection is a projection. That is based on, of course, the most reliable information we have. The actual expenditures will come to you at the end of every fiscal year. I will report back, and even before we get to the end of the fiscal year, if we believe that these projections should be revised, we do that as part of our immediate budget process. That's what we do. Again, the $530,000 for electrical work at Wayne Makin Park is, again, a placeholder based on what we have been told by the engineer who has looked at that project, that this is what it's going to cost. When we actually bid that work, that will come back to the city council, and the actual expenditures will be authorized at that time.
And I have one more question. Forgive me, Mr. Mayor, for Brian. In our recent survey, they, it was sort of strange, but very interesting. People love the open space of Norco, they love the idea of the lifestyle. But then oddly, they talked about how they didn't really care so much about parks and things. Now, we've been down this road before, we've looked at closing parks, and it's expensive, correct, to close a park? But isn't our park system part of our open space system? And isn't it, I mean, is it a problem that we haven't communicated that parks are part of the, what I call, large lots to trails to open space? Or is maybe people confused, confusing the two, or they don't understand the relationship between the two? I mean, is it advisable that in this funding package, what we need to do is look at maybe closing parks? Or we need to look at, I mean, I'm not an advocate of that, but-
Well, I think there is definitely a difference between both passive-active and open space. And, but, the system of a park system overall, in my definitions, and I think NRPA would agree to this definition, is that's part of your overall park system. So our overall, and one of the challenging issues we always have is we have a lot of park acreage if you, when we look at that, because it's inclusive of open space. But if you define out our active or passive park space, it's a lot more minimum. The fact of the matter is, is that we have 700 acres of open space in the city, and that inflates our overall park acreage. So there's something true to that. But there is really an aligned difference between a developed park versus undeveloped areas that are considered park.
And then the other piece of the puzzle is that the parks also take care of all the buildings in the city of Norco, right? Basically.
Not sure if I understand-
In other words, you take care of, part of your parks' budget is you oversee the maintenance of buildings and-
Yes, our department oversees all the operation and maintenance for all public facilities.
Just wanted to make sure people knew that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina? This was on the franchise fees to CRC. When, when the school district went to ware disposal, we had difficulty, but finally got resolved in collecting franchise fees from them. Are we having any difficulty at this point with their new franchise hauler?
I'll clarify where we would like to get more from Ware. We are receiving money, but I-
Okay. Is it Ware that's gonna-
Actually, it's a different, a completely different business. And we have been in contact. The individual immediately responded to my phone call as well as email. And he had indicated he's going to the state of California to discuss this with them. His bid occurred before all of this came to his attention, so-
Had he had to pay franchise fees?
And, again, this is, I'm just relaying, I understand he's completely aware of franchise fees throughout the state of California, most likely.
And who's the hauler?
I wanna say it's Axis. Oh, I can't get the exact name. It is an unknown even to Waste-
It's not one of the major players?
No, no.
Okay. Okay. I mean, are we anticipating that we are gonna collect franchise fees? Or is there gonna be difficulty with this?
I know in future steps, I'll be working with Andy and John on that.
Basically, the code requires them to-
Absolutely, absolutely.
And is specific, and so we are-
And this is why I brought it up.
We are going to do whatever is necessary to pursue collection of cities' franchise fee.
Right. Because I know that when we had the difficulty with Ware in the school district, and I won't bring it up in public session, because I know you're friends with them now. What's the dollar amount that, could you say that we were getting from Waste Management for CRC?
$55,000.
Okay. So at a minimum, we wanna be able to get at least $55,000, if not more-
Yes.
From that. Okay. Thank you. And you'll keep us posted on that. Just, just back on Wayne Makin, just for a minute, Brian. Understanding that this is a budget, it's an estimate, it's a placeholder, okay? And that, when do you anticipate we'll go out to bid?
We're in plan check now, and I'm just waiting to hear back from them. And I would imagine, I should probably have a response back by next week, unless we have a second revision or something. But then I would imagine that within, you know, my goal is to be out to bid. We already have the boilerplate ready, specs are done. I'm just waiting to put all that package together and advertise. So once I have a clear shot from plan check, then I would say within 10 days, we're out to notice invite to bid. And a minimum of 30 days.
So hopefully out of plan check next week, another 10 days, and then 30 days to receive bids?
Yeah, we might be sooner and cut that back a little bit, but to be realistic, that's probably about right, so.
And then even at that time, like I said, once again, this is just a placeholder. When those bids come back, we have the opportunity to accept, reject, value engineer, or rebid the project.
That's correct.
Okay. And then my last question, and it's, I don't want to put you on the spot, Eric. And because we had this discussion the other day, and I just kinda wanted you to make it, if other council or any of the residents wanted any clarification, since this is a major amount of funding for the traffic enforcement deputy in the CSO. Could you either reiterate or redefine our conversation from the other day on traffic enforcement specifically? And how we're gonna use this deputy, and then the relation to basically that $100,000 in overtime?
Yes, so basically, Norco Sheriff's Office has not had a dedicated traffic team since 2010. Since that time, as a contract city, the Norco Sheriff's Office has continued to provide enforcement of all laws, understanding that the deputies that are working out here, their priority is based on calls for service. So they don't necessarily have the time or the ability to perform specific traffic enforcement. Several years ago, we had a discussion, and thanks to city council, we started basically a temporary program, or an interim program of traffic enforcement, specific traffic enforcement, where we, the city provided a budget for us to schedule traffic enforcement throughout the city based upon the need where injury collisions and collisions were occurring. And that's what we've been doing for several years. And in the last couple of years, it has been out $100,000 annually. And basically, that allows for a deputy to provide traffic enforcement roughly four days a week at six-hour shifts. So you're getting about 24 hours of traffic enforcement per week. The deputies have done a good job, they continue to do a good job, but this is an interim solution. And we're always looking towards a permanent solution and finding the ability to start rebuilding the traffic program. And what we've done is, we've taken that $100,000, the proposal is, take that $100,000 and roll it in towards funding a specific traffic enforcement deputy. Now, this deputy will not be assigned to answering dispatch calls for service. His sole purpose, his sole intent, his assignment will be to conduct traffic enforcement. And I think the easiest way to explain this is, everybody knows for the most part, the motor officers that have traditionally worked out here in Norco, they get on their motorcycle, they go out, and they are doing traffic enforcement. This is basically a similar approach, he's just in a patrol car and not on a motorcycle. He will be tasked with evaluating our traffic index report, which basically, every two weeks, we look at where the injury collisions are occurring, as well as the non-injury collisions are occurring, and taking into consideration citizens' concerns, and evaluating those areas for traffic enforcement. So that $100,000, again, instead of funding overtime, we're gonna roll it into funding a full-time, dedicated traffic enforcement deputy. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have right now. So, okay.
Brian-
Thank you, Eric.
And I wish Chad was here, because he could answer this. You mentioned the two maintenance workers for trail for the entrances. And Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad was mentioning the fact that the north entrance and the Hamner entrance is gonna be handled by Brightview. Okay, so we're not, these part-time maintenance workers would not be used at our entranceways? But that's what you said with the entrances?
They would be looking at egresses, I'd be looking at what comes off of the I-15, I'd be looking at River Drive and Coridon, I'd be looking at those different stretches and entry points into the city. We'd be looking at other locations throughout the city, and it's basically, it's not just trail maintenance, it's going through those particular sections and clearing, cleaning up weed abatement, and trying to get to those areas that we don't get to now.
Okay. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you are right, sir, about that's part of the proposal for North Drive, is to put that under maintenance, that section.
This is a public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing.
William Naylor?
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I kinda wrote this out, and I feel a little bit sad that I'm gonna have to make some requests, but especially since we're looking like we'll be in a little bit of a deficit this coming year, but I'm still going to do it. I stand before you as a concerned resident of Norco. As a resident, I have attended numerous council, commission, and town hall meetings in which the importance of trails in our community, Horsetown USA, was stressed. Also, in those same meetings, it was made very clear that the city has not adequately funded trails. This, of course, can be attributed to numerous reasons. In discussions with staff, I have been, excuse me. In discussion with staff, I have come to believe that there may be a misunderstanding between city staff and council as regards to the priority of the trails in Norco. It has been told to me on several occasions by staff that the trails are not a council priority, as demonstrated by the lack of funding for the maintenance of these trails. I, for one, do not believe this to be the case, as it is first the responsibility of city staff to request the necessary funds to do the job properly, and then for the city council to take the responsibility of establishing the priority, whether those funds should be appropriated or not. In this year's budget, you have been, excuse me. In this year's budget, you have before you the request to fund two part-time employees to help with trail maintenance. This is a good start. The problem remains, though, that the supplies for those maintenance, part-time employees, is just not there. There's only about a $25,000 budget item, line item, in the public works section for trail maintenance. And according to staff, that money is always expended, and they're really hurting to be able to purchase trail posts or DG, that type of stuff. It is my opinion that council needs to, since staff has not made a request to increase that amount of funds, the council should go back and look and see if they could not make some kind of slight increase to that budget so that the department does have sufficient funds to do the job that they need to do on our trail maintenance. We have created several programs within the city of made up of volunteers, both from organizations and individuals that go out, and we are more than happy to do what we can to help. But again, we need the supplies. With all the work that we're doing, taking out some of the old trail fencing, we've got plenty of rails, but we don't have the post, and that's something that we really need to help. So at this point, I would like to suggest that council demonstrate the priority of trail maintenance by making a slight increase in the maintenance part of the budget for trail maintenance. And this will help have staff understand that it is a priority for the city of Norco and the legacy of Horsetown USA. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
There are more cards on this item.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for any further discussion. Berwin?
First of all, thank you, Gina, for the, you and your staff for the hard work getting all this budget material ready and everything. But, no, the only question I had, Mr. Mayor, was about the electrical over there at Wayne Makin. And it's already been answered, because I've had a lot of residents asking me when we're gonna get this started. And I told them we've already got it, gonna put it in the budget, and it should be done sometime. When do you think, Brian, sometime by 1st September, maybe?
We'll get it into budget and then the construction phase, I would say we're at least 90 days probably to be beginning to end on that, so. I think probably signing out or bringing back a notice of completion in October is probably more realistic.
Okay.
If everything runs as according to plan.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's probably gonna be more for staff than probably the public. But I'm gonna tell you, I have a hard time with the budget with the structural deficit. I understand things like Wayne Makin come up, and that's why we have our reserves, is to cover things like that, just like all of us in our personal budgets. When I ask about diversification, it's not just about hotels and restaurants and those type of things, but potential light industrial and things that aren't gonna have a huge impact on our community, but bring in the revenue that we need. When we're looking at our budget, obviously, if we're spending more than we're making, we either need to make more or we need to spend less. We all know that as well. Being a public agency, though, there's some things that have a tendency to be outside of our control, whereas that's a little different than our own personal finances. With that being said, I feel like we need to kinda think outside the box a little bit more than maybe we do as far as looking at solving some of these problems. And one for me personally is the Wayne Makin complex. Been a baseball mom for several years, and I think about going to opening day for baseball. And you cannot find a parking spot if you're late. You can't. Then the following weekend is opening day for softball. And again, you cannot find a parking spot if you're late. So then I think there's a huge segment of our community that that sports complex is incredibly important to. And a portion of our community that we don't always have a tendency to focus on, which is our youth. We have a lot of strong youth organizations, but I don't think that it's necessarily- We have a lot of strong youth organizations, but I don't think that it's necessarily a priority. A lot of these groups are self-sufficient, and run by very strong organizations and strong groups of parents. So then I think to my work, and I think of how I'm funded partially by the government, and how I get stressed out at work, because the government's super undependable about their funding, in my particular job. And so, in my job, we looked at, how can we become a little more self-sufficient and not have to depend on the government to provide for us? And so, this community of Norco is incredibly supportive of a fundraiser that we do for the agriculture department, and it's just a tiny little segment. I work with 400 students. You look at the number of children that go to Wayne Makin' and use that facility, it's a huge number. And I think about Norco, and I think about the parents, and I think about how incredibly supportive they are. Why aren't we looking at having some type of an event where the community rallies around the fact that, hey, everybody that uses Wayne Makin', we've got a problem, and it's a big problem, and we need everybody to kind of rally around this cause? Could Norco raise, or the 530,000? I don't know, but I'm pretty confident they could easily raise 100 for that particular cause. And so I don't know if that's something that city staff needs to take on, or if that's something a council member needs to take on, but when we're sitting here looking at a deficit, we need to think about other ways to raise money, and I think about all the parents and all the kids, and me being one of them, and the types of fundraisers that these groups do, there's no reason why we couldn't just with that base. And then you think about, you know, the people that come to the area to support the act department, we have people coming from Orange County for that event. There is no reason why we can't ask our community for a little help, to say, hey, why don't we rally around this cause? And try and offset our deficit a little bit, and maybe it's 100,000, but you know what? That's $100,000 less that I'm going to have to worry about, sitting up here, when we're working on a budget. So, something for staff to consider when it comes to particular projects like that. And if it's something that a council member needs to take up, then put my name down, and I'll do it. But it's definitely something we need to work on. Yeah.
Would you, on other matters at the end of the meeting?
Sure.
Would you bring it up?
Sure.
And for discussion?
Thank you.
Thanks. Carry on.
I think that was my only, I think, on the part-time stuff, when we look at the survey, and things in general that residents talk to us about, they talk to us about the traffic, and everybody drives too fast, so we've put traffic enforcement in the budget. People talk to us about how things don't necessarily look great, there's graffiti in the weeds and all that kind of stuff. So there's the part-time folks on weekends, which I think in coordination with community groups, is another way we're going to be able to get a lot of stuff done. And not so much, but sometimes service at city hall, so there's a part-time permit technician. So we're looking at a deficit, but what we've done is, we've put in things that we, as council people, constantly hear about, that we need to address. And so for me, maybe this one year, looking at the budget, making these choices, and then seeing what our dividends are, are residents more satisfied with what they're getting and how their town looks? And if they are, then maybe we, again, look at getting more opportunities for revenue, give some time for the conference to work, and get some more tax base in, and I go from there. But I am not going to lie, super, super uncomfortable with the deficit, but I think if we think outside the box, we can maybe decrease that deficit just a little bit. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ted?
Last January, when we approved the traffic deputy and the CSO, I made a comment that I had to prove it only if we were going to sustain it. We have to sustain it, and that's, you know, it's a big chunk, the extra 600 and some thousand dollars, but we have to do it, because we need it. So, you know, it's one of those things, yes, ouch, it hurts the budget, but it has to be done. So I, you know, I could swallow that one. But again, here we are, we're trying to be good stewards of the people's money, and I know it's not much, when you think, well, there's 31,000, and there's 15,000 there, but it is the public's money, and we have to be good stewards of that money. And I'm looking at part-time maintenance workers and part-time, you know, we have a code that says you take care of the trail in front of your house. The Horsemen's Association received a big chunk of money from Waste Management years ago, with trailkeeping equipment in there. And I'll go back to the volunteers, and I'm going to jump on Robin's bandwagon, we have a bunch of good volunteers, they just need, that's what we need to do, we need to tell people, folks, there's no more money. There's no magic wand, Gina doesn't have a magic wand sitting there, Andy didn't have a magic wand when he was the city financier. We basically don't have it. I hate to see us lose and keep going into those reserves, because eventually, there is no more reserves. And yeah, it's not that much, but it shows good stewardship on our part, and this came from a former council person one time, he said, every time you get a little extra money, you hire another person. Steve needs another person, granted, back there in the permit section engineer, because you're hurting. And Patty needs another person, because we can't have her do the hours. But those other ones, the part-time maintenance workers for trails, and that maintenance worker up at the facilities, I think it can be done with volunteers and good use and scheduling before I approve, I won't approve it, having those extras in there, it just, to me, it's not good stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Kevin?
I served on the board for Norco Girl Softball for seven years, and there's a huge fund of money from 1984, and I used to get so frustrated from the Olympics, and I wrote grants for many years, and I could never get anybody to apply for that money. I went to Norco Little League, I mean, year in and year out, but I am totally on board with trying to figure out a way to raise the money for the lights. The problem is, is that the problem is dire, but I think maybe taking a page from Friends of Wayne Makin', something like that, where we create a fund, that maybe for this project, we don't do it, but part of the problem you have is, it's so expensive for kids to play sports nowadays, it's just expensive. Try to get somebody to man the snack bar, not just hand you 25 bucks. It's tough. You're one of the good ones, I worked my butt off down there, but for the most part, it's very hard to get people to volunteer. Volunteerism is dying, but I think it's a great idea. I like the idea of creating an endowment of some kind, so that five years from now, we don't get caught short, and I think that's a really good idea. I like, I like that. Part-time maintenance workers, I know that the entrances, I'm thinking more in terms of the corner of Fourth and Temescal, I think it's Temescal. I happened to be sitting in the backseat, another driver was in the front, and the weeds are so high in the public right-of-way, that thank God I was sitting in the backseat, because that driver would have pulled right in front of a car that was coming, you couldn't see the car coming. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about California and Sixth, that's an entranceway going down Sixth Street. We're talking about areas along Sixth Street that are so overwhelmed with weeds that are in the public right-of-way, and I think those things need to be taken care of. I totally get your point, that we're trying to save money, but at the same time, I look back historically, when people make money, they spend money to make money. In terms of economic development, the public sector deals with an entity that's already in place, trying to get money from that public sector, from whatever system is set in place. Private sector, you're inventing your business every single day, every single day. Economic development is the same thing, and so anything we can do to make the city look better, I think is worthwhile. I totally get that we're over budget. I don't want to be over budget, but as Berwin can tell you, we've been in worse situations, a lot worse. I like, I want to piggyback on Robin, I really liked what you had to say, in terms of, you know, supplying a police officer, trying to clean the place up, I think those things are very, very important. One of the suggestions I have is, I think, a little pre-planning, and I like, I'm going to again, piggyback of what you said, in terms of the youth sports groups, creating that endowment, but one of the things that I learned when we were at the ICS thing, is I think we need to have a better planning. In other words, we've talked about this, but we actually go through the town and really look to see, okay, Neil Snipes Park, what, how much of that can be used for commercial? You've hit on something, light industrial, my understanding of light industrial doesn't generate any money, and so what we want to do is, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, because it depends if it's point of sale, is it a service, depends on what they make. So maybe what we need to really do, and Andy's talked about this, is we really look at the businesses that generate the most money for the city, and begin to go, okay, we want that business, if it's a light industrial, where we're point of sale, I mean, who knew that Paul Blanco was going to generate the kind of money it's going to generate? So do we go after Paul Blanco, or do we go after, I think that we really need to do that. We need to pinpoint exactly what businesses we want, and we need to really look at properties we own and don't own. One of the things that is just a reality in going just to TUMP, and it's, this is really important, the, there's a part of me that gets upset that there was so much money, if you start a business, you're going to have to pay into the TUMP fund, but the reality is, is we get 11 cents for property tax, we do all the work, we do all the work for sales tax, and we get nothing back. Do you realize if we got one more penny from sales tax, we would double what we're bringing in? Double it. And here we are, there's all these other in-place systems that control the government, but what if we did a campaign where we said, one penny more? We want one penny more, because ultimately, Robin, the problem we have is, we do all the work, we generate all the business, we get nothing back. It goes to people that do, that generate nothing, in terms of, they give a service that's important, and valuable to society, obviously, I'm not discounting that, but the reality is, we don't generate enough money. So I'm good with this budget, what I would like to see, though, with the part-time workers, is I want to see a, I want to see a report, maybe in three months. The other thing that was hit on is trails. I actually brought that up last time, and I got frustrated, but the truth is, we either have a code, or we don't, and maybe, maybe what we need to do is, send it to Streets and Trails, and we either, you know, when trails are put into place, the edict was, from that long ago city council, I know things have changed, was it would never impact the general fund, because the residents had to take care of it. And I think he makes a good point, are we large lots to trails to open space in parks? Or are we large lots to open space? The conduit is trails, and one of the things that, Berwin and I went to a thing where they taught, this city of Norco is actually in the catbird seat, we're doing what everybody else wants to do. We have a nexus point with roads, and we're putting bikes in, and we're doing a lot of very cool things in terms of parks. There's a lot of things in the works, Snipes is one of them, but there's a lot of things in the works, where there's large pieces of park, that we now have the opportunity to turn into revenue generators, many, many acres, and guess what? People are going to fight us. So I like this budget, I don't like being over budget, but at the same time, I want the cop. I like the part-time maintenance workers with a caveat that he's going to look at that, and that's my position. Thank you very much.
Well, I don't like it. And, but, with that, you know, our first directive is public safety, and when we have almost $700,000, we know we need an extra deputy and a CSO. And then with our fire, that increase of $400,000, I mean, we're well over $1 million, which is our number one priority, and there's no choice with that. I had one other question. We have a $10,000 item for public art, I do not recall what that public art was at Engels Park.
This is a transfer from the Day of the Cowboy fund, we have to move it into the budget in order to use it. It was money that the committee raised, so in order to do that, it has to be a budgeted item in our budget.
Okay, and it's from Day of the Cowboy?
Yes, that's correct. It's just moving the revenue in for expenditures.
Okay. I think everyone up here, I mean, we understand the trails and the maintenance, and, but I think part of it either goes back, and we keep harping on this, but it's what our code is about, you know, maintaining the property in front of your house, whether it becomes just a notification to the neighbor, or if it's a code enforcement case, we'll see a great example. I don't think it was Fourth and Temescal, I think you meant Fourth and Valley View? Well, Fourth, they're both then.
I thought that was Fourth and Temescal.
Okay.
Weeks ago.
Yeah, and Fourth and Valley View, and that's going to look very impressive this weekend, with a few thousand people coming to the Disney Ranch, and they'll be able to turn right by where all the weeds are, at that corner, so, yeah.
That's sweet, because you went to the pool.
Yeah, right, so, I get that part of it, believe me. And that's embarrassing. But I do side with Ted on these two workers, and maybe it's just something we don't need, we need to maintain, but maybe it's something we can hold off on, and I think the reason that I object to the two part-time workers at this time, Brian, is that I don't believe I see any efficiency with court workers at all. But these are going to be two minimum wage, part-time park workers, that are going to have to sign up community workers, load them in the van, load them in with tools, drive to a location, let them take their break, load them back up, go to lunch, come back, unload, take a break, and nothing gets done. If you want to guarantee me that you'll have a walking boss with mirrored sunglasses, I'll support it, but at this time, I think that, you know, for 32,000 bucks, plus the equipment and that, I'd rather wait and see where we are with, in a few months with this. And it's more of, I just don't see the efficiency with those workers, I really don't. Everything else, I think, pretty much it is what it is. Obviously Patty needs work, or help. I'm not at Engels as much as Ted is with the additional part-time worker, I mean, if we can hold on that for a while, you know, we've held back on spending $50,000, and then, and obviously, we need the help at the counter on that. I did want to make sure, because it's not listed on this one, the $75,000 placeholder for the circulation element is out at this time, and that'll be, become a function of the Planning Commission?
Yeah, what'll happen, because it, along with several other elements of the general plan, need updating, so what we'll do is periodically be bringing those to Planning Commission and City Council, because City Council has to adopt it. And instead of having a traffic study, traffic analysis, survey, supported update to the circulation element, the one we'll bring is going to be more cosmetic in nature, not so visionary, that could be supported with an appropriate traffic study, but it will eliminate some inconsistencies in old information that's in there right now.
And that will satisfy?
Do that itself.
Okay, but that'll satisfy the state?
Yep.
Our state obligation with our circulation element at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Did council want to, you want to just take a consensus on the part-time workers? Seems like Ted and I want to hold off, but Kevin?
I think that, I was entertained by how you characterized it, but Brian, what he said is that he will, he will actually oversee it, and I- he will actually oversee it. And I think that, while I understand, and again, by the way, it's not that I like this budget, it's that I understand it. But if we can maybe get him started, and in three months, see how he's doing, if in fact, it's what you described, I'd like to see if he can use those court workers and actually clean up the city. But I do take your point seriously.
My opinion, if we couldn't do it, I'd be recommending to pull the plug on--
I just want to get a consensus, so we're giving you some direction. Ted, I think I know your opinion.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to reiterate what you said. And, and that would be for the two part-time park maintenance for horse trail, and the part-time maintenance worker for the facility up there. If you, only because I work with the court workers. I did, I did it when I was in the Sheriff's Department, and I've done it here. I concur with Mayor Newton. It just, you spin your wheels trying to keep track of them, give them their breaks and everything, and you don't get anything out of them. I'd rather have, if you want to spend some money, if you want to clean something, then set aside some money for the Cal Fire crews. When they go out, they work and they clean up things. And I'd rather, I'd approve that, if you want to spend something up for that. But right now, I, those three part-time workers, I see no reason for it.
Robin?
I'm going to go ahead and concur with Ted on, on that particular fact, because I also have been in the area while the court workers are up there. So I would concur on that, although the Cal Fire idea, I do like that. So if we can change it, I'd be up for that.
Can we get like $25,000 for some Cal Fire?
I'd go along with the Cal Fire deal. But let me get something clear here. Now, you're talking about two part-time park maintenance workers. Why are you going to have to have a straw boss to load them up and haul them somewhere, and then give them their brakes and everything? Because if they're hired, part-time, getting paid, it'd be just like the little guys that bring the agendas at night. They don't have a driver. They drive theirselves. They go up to the park, they turn the lights off. They don't have a driver and a straw boss. What, you're comparing these guys to court workers?
No, these two, the two part-time park maintenance workers, they would be the ones shuttling the court workers and managing them on the week.
I thought the two part-time maintenance workers was going to be out there swinging shovels and hoes and--
You are correct. They are going to be working staff, not just sitting there and presenting to court workers, or just sitting or leaning on a fence. No, they have to be working staff. There is no other substitute for that.
They're just like the little guys that open up Nellie Weaver Hall and deliver the agendas. They go up and turn the lights on and off. They're on their own. They don't have a guard with them.
That's correct. And the, the community service who are court workers are to help augment manpower if we get them. If not, they will be assigned to do those trails or those corrections throughout the city.
Right.
Whether there's one court worker or 10 court workers.
That's what I understood when we talked about hiring these two guys at the budget hearing, that these were going to be employees of the city. They're not going to be wearing the orange uniforms and stuff like that. So am I correct? Okay.
But they'd also be babysitting the court workers.
If we don't have them, they won't be babysitting them. They'll be out working.
You're right. And I guess we need to quantify what is babysitting. If they were working for me, they wouldn't be babysitting, because they wouldn't be there. That's right. I would DR them, and they're gone. They're out. They're heading back to the Sheriff's Department or the Volunteer Center. They're there to work. If they're not going to do what is assigned, then they're DR'd and they're released immediately. We don't have to put up with that. It's not part of the assignment of those type of people. Staff will put them to work, and if they don't perform, they'll be returned back to the court system. And that's an immediate, no question asked thing. We DR'd them on a form, and they're gone. I ran the program for 15 years before this, and I know that I've been successful in my other, in doing this. So, and my expectations for this program are very, is about accomplishing the goal. If we don't do it, then we're not going to be able to do it. I think Ted's suggestion of Cal Fire, it's great. You have, you have guys who are there and will do the job, and are very good at what they do. And they also understand if they don't follow through, the particular person who's assigned to them from Cal Fire will have them go back into the institution, which is the worst thing they want to be. Because it's a lot better to be on those crews.
But these, but these two guys here are not court workers. They're part-time employees of the city.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I, and I agree with the Cal Fire guys. They, they get it done. Yeah, Kevin?
Maybe, maybe the, maybe the way to look at this is, I, I, part of the problem with the court workers is that they, they, they sometimes can't get there in time, and they feel leave a little early. Is that still the same situation? Or can they be there like at 10:00 and then leave at 4:00?
Mine don't go anywhere, because they're incarcerated in prison. So you're referring to--
No, no. But what I meant, what I meant by that is that the, is that sometimes they're not effective, because they get to work an hour or two hours. But I guess the bigger question would be, I could go along with excluding those things if, if we as a council could commit to solving the problem. And the problem is, what are we going to do with our trails? Maybe there's a better way to spend the money. I, you know, I've worked with, with Brian for a long time. I trust him. If he says he's going to make this work, he'll make this work. So maybe a suggestion is, we see if he can make it work. But at the same time, I think we need to really look at our, we've been talking about this since I got a park and rec commission in, what, '97? And we have yet to truly answer the question of what do we do with our trails? So maybe we need to agendize trails, give it to Streets and Trails, do something so we finally make a decision. Because we do have rules on the books.
Well, I think that goes back to our discussion from the other meeting that, with the commission, that we need to use our Streets and Trails Commission, and we need to start first with a, a trail standard.
My understanding is, we have a trail standard, and that--
No, we don't.
No, we, we do have--
We do.
We do have a trail standard for parks and LMDs.
Right. Yeah.
That, that standard is not throughout the city. That's the issue. And, and one of the concerns that the Public Works Director has is that to have a standard to meet that standard, you have to have this, the, the resources to keep that standard at that level. Otherwise, a standard is futile to have. Now, the difference there is, in the Assessment District, is they pay to maintain that standard. And in the parks, where we have a trail, it's part of the overall park acreage, so they have to maintain that standard. It's in our specifications. The difference is, is that in all of our bridle trails throughout the city, we have a construction standard, which is the big, when we reconstruct a trail or build a new trail, that trail, as soon as we open it, has already degraded, degraded to not the construction standard. So we have to have some sort of a standard in between there that keeps the trail safe and, and optimal for people to use. The challenge is, is how do we maintain that level of standard? If we can have a standard, but how do we keep it? And that's really the, the challenge, I think, overall, not only for, for those commissions engaged in this, the council, for staff. And merely what I presented to you through this budget process this year was an alternative, because we haven't really done anything in the last several years. And it was, and the Public Works guys, at their best effort, are out chasing infrastructure problems all the time. And they just don't get, can't get to it. So the idea was to bring something back to the council. And at the time, we weren't sure we were going to be at a $2 million shortfall. So when we were first looking at this. But it was to bring an alternative back, to try something that we haven't done before. I think Bill Naylor is correct, is, is that also materials are an emphasis in related to that. We have about 91 miles of developed trails in the city. We have about 130 miles overall, but some of that is not developed. How do we maintain 91 miles of trail and try and keep it at some sort of a safe standard? I think that's the big question. How are you going to get there? We don't have enough volunteers to cover that. Just, it's not realistic. But, and even with the Cal Fire crews, as good as they are, our trouble is, is if a fire breaks out, that's the priority. And so you may lose them for a couple of weeks, and then you may get them back. And when they're here, they're great. There's, I mean, you get stuff done. They're, they're, it's, it's amazing. However, it's also getting them on the schedule and, and then being able to have a consistent program in place. And so, you know, whether we approve this or not, it was, it was more of my recommendation to Andy and discussions with Chad, is to try something. And so whether we do it or we don't, that's okay. But I think it's something for a question, it's, it's a question for us to talk about on the bigger picture. What are we going to do in the future? And how are we going to deal with that? And maybe it's worth a budget, some sort of a workshop on that with both the, the commissions and Parks and Recreation, Streets and Trails. I, I don't know. But I do know that it's a bigger picture for us to do, because if not, you can go out and start an enforcement. But we only have one code enforcement officer and one part-timer. So that's a lot of regulation there, too. And some people, some people, you can go down the road, and you can see how nice they keep their trail, and then their neighbors don't do anything. And so, and we've tried. We've sent mailers out. We've done a lot of ways of trying to get that message out. But again, it, in some places it works, and a lot of other places it doesn't.
Well, I agree with you. It has to be part of the discussion, and, and it should be part of the education discussion we have with the bigger picture of what the residents would like to see here in the near future and next year.
Mr. Mayor, is there a possibility in, without, is, if we approve this budget, and to postpone that, at least the two park maintenance workers till Jan, till mid-year, and let you work on a solution from Cal Fire, and you come up with the Streets and Trails, get with Chad, and come up with a standard so we can get this, and then come up with something that's going to work, rather than just, okay, so we need to do this, not saying we don't, but what is it going to cost if we have Cal Fire crews? And then the standard that we need to do for maintenance and this? Because right now, all I'm looking at is, two guys are going to go out and hoe weeds and fix a few fences, and that's not what we're trying to do.
There's a bigger picture. I agree with--
And that's what I'm saying. And I think this may be a start, but I think this is something that, when we get a chance and look at the budget come January of next year, you go through your workshops, you have something, we can probably look at this and adjust it and go from there. Rather than trying to, because right now, I think we're beating this dead horse up on it, so.
Well, if you can put that into a motion, I can support that. If you'll put into a motion that those stipulations are included, and postponed to January, and that you look at those two things, and that we look at the bigger picture, as you described it, I can support that.
Steph would be happy to work with, I, I think Parks and Recreation Commission, Streets and Trails, Scott and his people, and talk about some solutions, and take a look at the bigger picture and bring that back. I think that's, I'm okay with that. But I think it's, it needs to be part of our new discussion.
Which one do you want to cut out, Ted? Totally, totally clear?
The two part-time maintenance workers. And I really, that one, and then the other part-time maintenance worker until, this might be again back in January, that one, discussion in January. Because I know why you need it. It's because we're making revenue on the corrals. And I know that Patty is now over, what is it, 108% over last year's--
Oh, yeah. And actually--
For rentals.
Yeah. And we are, have really actually, and plus with the new, three new roping bookings that we have just received contracts on, our, our, our needs are increasing as we try to fulfill multiple day events.
I just, I just know what happens to those part-time workers, is they go, hey, I need you over here, and they're not up at the park. And that's a scheduling issue that y'all need to work out. But I just see it too much.
So you're talking about this one, this one?
The two, the, the part-time, two part-time maintenance workers, and the one part-time maintenance worker for the facility.
What about this one?
For Patty? No, that needs to be done. Your turn, but--
That one, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's not that much, but let's bring those back in January, if we can. Make that a motion and bring those back in January.
But with the caveat that we're going to really look at the big picture. We're not going to postpone it for another 12 years. Yeah.
So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on all this, and if you want to include the as amended in your motion.
So make a motion to approve the budget as, as submitted with the elimination of the two part-time maintenance workers and one part-time maintenance worker for Engels, with looking at them in mid-year, in January, and to--
Certified Streets and Trails, whatever.
And what do you need more?
Well, I want to, I want to know that when we walk out of here, that there's actually going to be some movement forward in terms of the trails, in terms of Streets and Trails is going to look at it. We're going to create a standard, a mid-standard.
Cheryl, you got that part? Three?
Creating a trail standard?
Yeah, a, a trail standard until we come back.
Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission?
Yep, yep.
And we need to find a long-term solution for the trails, preserve them.
Counsel members, Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman--
Yes.
Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. Item 5B, approve of five-year capital improvement program. Gina?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. I have a brief attachment with this item. And it's just recapping of the estimated beginning fund balance for all of these projects. By fund at $14.5 million with estimated revenues being $9.2 million. Estimated expenditures and transfers at $20.5 million for fiscal year 1718, and a year-end fund balance of $3.3 million. And just bring your attention to the fact that we are spending considerable amount. The plan is to spend $20.5 million next year. And if you have any questions?
Any questions for staff? Kevin?
Ted?
Robin?
No.
Berwin?
No, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Cheryl?
There are no cards on this item.
Okay. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back for any further discussion.
Pretty simple after next year. There's nothing there. You have a motion in a second?
Council members, Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6A, A, Sheriff's Department, 2016 Annual Report. Lieutenant?
No, no, he, no, he's taking it down. Alfred, I tried. Did you miss?
No.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, and members of the public. The Riverside Sheriff's Department has enjoyed a proud collaborative relationship with the city and community since its incorporation in 1964. This will be a short overview of your Sheriff's Department services. The City of Norco contracts with the Riverside Sheriff's Department to provide all-inclusive law enforcement services to its residents. The Norco Sheriff's Office consists of 22 staff members, including one lieutenant, two sergeants, 12 patrol deputies, two dedicated special enforcement team deputies, and two dedicated community service officers. Their duties include evaluating crime, identifying trends, and developing solutions to minimize or eliminate the negative effects on the community. Because of the contracted services with the Sheriff's Department, our deputies have access to many resources, including the helicopter-- access to many resources, including the helicopter, SWAT, bomb team, forensics, and crime analysts. With the use of our detective bureau and special enforcement team, we conduct regular sex offender and probation parole compliance checks. Meltheft is a crime that seems to be increasing, not only in Norco, but other jurisdictions as well. We have made it a priority to investigate those crimes and identify and arrest the suspects involved. To date, we have identified and arrested 18 suspects for meltheft and related crimes, and have recovered hundreds of stolen pieces of mel belonging to Norco residents. Our diligence will continue. In 2016, we had 9,179 calls for police service. This is a 1.6% increase over 2015, and over the last several years, there has been a steady increase. Part 1 crimes, which are crimes reported to the FBI for statistical purposes, include homicides, forcible rapes, robberies, aggravated assaults, burglaries, larceny theft, motor-vehicle theft, and arson. All have seen an overall 32.1% increase. This is being driven by a 31.8% increase in property crimes and a 36.3% increase in violent crimes. There appears to be a direct correlation with the increase in property crime and the implementation of Proposition 47 and AB 109, which essentially reduced penalties and sentencing for numerous crimes and offenders. With the coordination of our sergeants and set deputies, we have developed a close working relationship with the community and local businesses. We have educated local businesses on ways they can prevent and reduce crime, and have established a neighborhood watch program that consists of four neighborhoods and over 80 residents. The program continues to grow. Our volunteer group, the Norco Citizens Patrol, have volunteered almost 5,774 hours of time to the community last year. Our traffic enforcement has been very active. During the federal fiscal year 1516, the city received a grant from the Office of Traffic Safety to conduct traffic enforcement and education activities. As a result, our deputies conducted 17 OTS and city-funded traffic enforcement operations, including DUI safety checkpoints, DUI saturation patrols, crosswalk safety operations, and distracted driver operations. Deputies issued over 1,726 traffic citations, 280 parking citations, and arrested 63 persons for driving under the influence. Overall, our traffic collisions have increased, including a 30.7% increase with injury collisions and an 8.1 increase in non-injury traffic collisions. We did have one fatal collision at the end of 2016. These collisions were most likely a result of additional vehicles on our city streets from nearby freeway and roadway construction. This traffic volume increase is especially noticeable during the communal hours. We continue to analyze our traffic collision statistics every two weeks and deploy our resources toward areas where these collisions occur. We continue to foster partnerships with the community and have participated in many outreach programs, including Shop with a Cop, Coffee with a Cop, National Night Out, and our continuing unload program. In conclusion, I would like to thank the mayor, members of city councils, city staff, and members of the public for making public safety a high priority and for all your support and partnerships. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Berwin?
Thanks, Lieutenant, for the report. Good job you guys do every day. I read everything you send out, and been successful with solving a lot of crime. But I noticed you're going to have the Coffee with a Cop here pretty quick. Are you going to have the National Night Out this year?
The National Night Out has traveled from the cities that are under the command of Harupa Valley Station, so I think that that plan is still being reviewed. I think Norco is not going to be on the next round for this, but obviously, in the future, when we rotate back through, it'll be part of the program.
But it'll be in one of the three cities this year? I mean...
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and Norco will be obviously invited to participate in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Robin?
All I can say is, good job by your staff on this. We get a lot of kudos. Everybody complains until they need you, and then they're there. But Arturo's sitting back there, and where's your partner, do you hide and go home? Got the Deputy of the Year, Matt Award on the other ones. Just good job. Good job.
Thank you. I'm very proud of my staff.
You should be.
You forgot the big dog. Kevin?
Eric?
Good work.
Thank you.
Captain Dan? Guys are doing great. This action is a receiving file. I'll make a motion.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B is appointment for two city council members to the Norco College Traffic Advisory Committee.
Yes, that's mine.
Andy?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is a request by Norco College President, Dr. Brian Reese, requesting that the city council appoint two members of the city council to serve on the Norco College Traffic Advisory Committee. Over the last several months, Dr. Reese has led outreach efforts to try to present information to Norco residents, to business leaders, business people, as well as college students, to get them to be aware of the traffic issues that are facing the college. Specifically, is the issue of providing a secondary access to the college. During the time that the president has engaged the public on this item, he has presented several options to providing secondary access to the college, and he has also received several inputs and recommendations. The purpose of the advisory committee is to consider all the input that has been supplied to the college president, and to ultimately make a recommendation that can come back, that will go back to Norco College, as well as other stakeholders, including the city of Norco, and trying to come up with a solution to the traffic issues that are facing the college. In addition to the two members of the city council requested to be appointed to this traffic advisory committee, Corona Norco Unified School District has also appointed two voting members. Riverside Community College District has also appointed a DA representative. Along with the voting members of this traffic advisory committee, there will be also non-voting members, which will include members from the Navy, as well as civic organizations. And these will be the group that, again, will make recommendations that will be considered by the decision-makers in terms of coming up with ultimate solutions for doing a secondary access to the college. Dr. Reese is here in the audience, and he's been waiting patiently to answer any questions that you might have. And with that, I conclude my remarks, and again, Dr. Reese is here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Andy. Does the council have any questions, either for the city manager or Dr. Reese? If you would care to step up?
I heard that Bill Hedrick spoke with Congressman Calvert, and Congressman Calvert is amenable to running the road to Fourth Street, that he said he thinks it could be worked out as long as the college pays for the land going there. Have you heard that?
I have not heard that, but that is good news.
It's true, but I mean, it's a pretty reliable source, and they said Bill Hedrick's the one that told them, so...
The only complaint, it's a good solution, was the original solution that was talked about. The only negative comment I've heard is from Commander Murray. He is worried about, if we run all the way through Fourth Street, that it'll interfere with a Navy entrance, and he's worried about issues connected with having too much traffic.
He's mad because you just demoted him.
Yeah. Maybe...
He's Captain Murray.
Well, okay, Captain Murray, yeah. But I think he's, you know, he's leaving in December, so maybe the new captain will have another attitude or another perspective on it. The previous captain didn't want us to cut through that property at all that's behind JFK. There's about 20 acres there that's owned by the college. It's undeveloped. So I did talk to Captain Murray, and he is willing to have the road cut through that area and connect into Market Street, but he's reluctant to support going all the way up to Fourth Street. If Congressman Calvert's for it, that'd be very helpful, yeah.
I meant sending an email to track that down.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
My recommendation is to appoint Mayor Protem Ted Hoffman and Councilmember Robin Grunmeyer to the Norco College Traffic Advisory Committee.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You know, Ted, I just love appointing you to... Kevin broke me in pretty good, and I'm just trying to pass that down the road. Okay, wrapping it up. City Council, city manager, staff communications. Kevin? Ed?
Yeah. Earlier tonight, we talked about the ICIS conference, and one of the things that, when I was there, is a lot of people looked at Sixth Street, but Sixth Street has such restrictive zonings with the C4. What I would like to do is throw this back to Steve and the Planning Commission to come up with some better ways so we can allow for more mixed uses and uses in that zoning. For those who don't know, initially, Sixth Street was all in the redevelopment area with plans for the Great Big Western Wares and everything on both sides with this unique horse town facades and everything, which I'm not against, but that's when we had a redevelopment agency. We don't have one anymore. So we don't have the extra funding and process to get those started anymore. So Steve, I'm going to throw it to you, because we've had people come up that want to build there, but can't. And with the 13, almost 13,000 trips through that area of Sixth Street alone, I think we need to relook at what is, can be used there and what can't. So if it's okay, we'll throw it to the Planning Commission and look at it, and get some ideas, or you have something else in mind.
Do we need to agendize that direction, or...
No, not...
Okay. I mean, and I agree with Ted. I've had the conversations with Steve and the city manager also, that we need to make some changes. Anything else, Ted?
That's it, thank you.
Robin?
Well, I guess I would just look at agendizing some type of either endowment or fundraiser or something, so that we can get some of these community areas taken care of, so...
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Anything else, Robin? Berwin?
Lieutenant? No, sir.
What's the date again for Coffee with the Cop? Polly's Pies?
Yes, Polly's Pie, I believe it's G-25th. It's a Wednesday, it starts...
And you're buying.
A couple hours. Coffee's... They send donations from Paul.
Okay. Chief?
I'll be there.
Free breakfast. Gina? Brian? Steve? Cheryl?
Just a quick note that the city clerk's office continues to receive applications from the public to serve on the city's four commissions and the Economic Development Advisory Council. Recruitment ends on Monday, June 12 at 6:00 p.m. So anyone having questions or needs more information, feel free to call the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Andy?
The city clerk is going to be contacting you to arrange for a study session, so that we can formally discuss the results of the community survey that was recently completed.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else?
No.
Okay. Then we're adjourned. Thank you.